Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, January 24th, 2022. The time is now 6:30 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Rodney Dexter Hendrickson, a former townie of Abington, Mass., died in his South Chatham home on January 8th, attended by loved ones. He fought a 23-year-long battle with cancer but lost the final skirmish. Rod was a graduate of Abington Schools in Bates College, class of 1957. He was the owner of Hendrickson's Dairy. Working with his family, he took a small local milk route to a thriving dairy distribution business covering the South Shore and Cape Cod. During that period of time, he served in multiple positions in town government, including Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. He also served on the Board of Directors of the former Abington National Bank, was an active member of the First Baptist Church of North Abington, and served as Treasurer for 25 years. Rod enjoyed sailing on Chatham waters with his family or other brave souls on his catboat Summer Breeze, baking off a couple of loaves of homemade bread and chugging around Chatham in his truck with his beloved boss dog, Suri. One of the safer folks to gather, a celebration of Rod's well-lived life will be held in Abington. Donations in his memory may be made to the Dana Faber Institute and through the First Baptist Church of North Abington designated to the support of a Beatty School in San Pedro de McCorris in the Dominican Republic. Thank you. Okay. Public hearing tonight, are we gonna, is this gonna go on for tonight?
I believe you see him.
Yeah, just walked in.
We want a way to, a couple more minutes for it all the time. We want to look, let's, we still have a couple minutes, we want to look at the agenda item number one, vote to approve the minutes of December 13th, 2021.
Public announcements.
Okay, I'm sorry. Public announcements, I'm sorry. Alex Agar, do you get any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one, I have two public announcements. I just wanted to wish everyone in Abington, all of our residents and businesses, a happy 2022. Hopefully this year will bring some very good fortune for us and our town and a lot of good health to you and your families and especially to our school students. Hopefully, you know, they have a wonderful and happy rest of a 2020 school year. And lastly, I also would like to let the residents know that on this Saturday, January 29th, 2022, there will be a comedy night at the KSC. Doors open at 6:30 and the show starts at 8:00 PM. It will be held at the Knights of Columbus on 254 Hancock Street here in Abington. Comedies, comedy will be done by Paul DeAngelo, Dan Miller, and Stephanie Peters. Tickets will be $25 and there will also be a 50/50 raffle. All the proceeds to this comedy night will benefit the Abington Police Association. For tickets, please email Brian Feely, B-R-I-A-N-F-E-E-L-Y-25@gmail.com, or you can call at And that's all I have for public announcements today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alex. Mike, anything?
Yeah, just one. Kinda hits home, firefighter, paramedic, John Force, he just retired this past Friday. He worked 42 years as an Abington employee, 36 of which was with the fire department. He was appointed to the department in July of 1985. He served on many committees throughout his year. I hear he was also a pretty cool Pee-wee football coach, baseball coach. He decided to advance his career, 25 years into his career, by putting himself through paramedic school. He's always known as one of the most consistent, reliable, conscientious firefighters ever in the department. He's served as a mentor to many of the young firefighters beginning in their careers. I know, for me, he was a huge asset, learned a lot from him, and him and his wife and son have become really good friends. So I wish him all the best and thank you for your service to the town.
Okay. Alex?
No, I have nothing.
Tim?
Just a reminder, today, Abington Saint Patrick's Day Committee sent out a reminder that the 41st Saint Patrick's Day Parade will be held on Sunday, March 20th at 1:00. The parade committee members are underway making plans for the event. They're looking to see if anybody wants to join them. You can join the meetings by contacting, by email at kjbailey@verizon.net, or call the parade chairman, Jack Bailey, at 781-878-7785.
Public comments, is there any public comments for anything on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. So the time is now 6:42. We have a 6:40 PM continued hearing, request for a Class II license for Damian Bennett doing business as Bentec LLC with business to be conducted through the internet only with no vehicles to be parked on property.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to reopen the hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, more. Here's a 401. Okay, motion is now, hearing is now open. Mr. Bennett, would you step up to the microphone, please?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome back. Thank you, long break. Yes. So, the last time I was here, I was tasked, based on the business, to find a location where I would have the business. And I have found a location. I believe you have a copy of that. It's 939 Rockton Ave.
And your rent and property there?
Yes.
How many, I'm seeing it here, but two spots for you?
Correct. That is correct.
So it's two spots, like for your car and maybe an employee's car, and then two spots that you would keep?
Four.
The cars out of sight.
Correct.
And you would never have more than two cars, cars for sale at any given time?
Not at the moment, correct.
Yeah, our concern last time was that you wanted to sell the cars and you'd have them on your property, that your residential property.
Correct. That's correct.
So you have a lease with the landlord of that address, that Rockton Ave address? Do you have a lease with him, or?
That would have been, no, no lease.
No lease?
No lease, right. Information was given to Nancy.
How long do you have the property for?
At least a year.
At least a year.
Right, yeah, and it will renew our private contract.
So do you plan on using this, these parking spaces moving forward after the year, or?
Yes, so I would love to grow. So, we're gonna use them after the year, so it's a renewal and grow.
Okay. Do we need anything in writing on that, Scott? An agreement to use this property, or?
I don't know that we do, but we can certainly get that. They're gonna be helpful to have it in the file.
I don't know how the board feels, I think it would just be, it would be good to have at least something on file, right?
Yeah, I don't think it'll bar anything tonight, but I think contingent on you just, you know, submitting where the location is.
Okay, I will do that.
I have no problem.
Just maybe a letter from the landlord stating that you've agreed to be there for you. It doesn't have to be a fancy contract or anything like that.
Just something in writing.
Just something, because, yeah, the license on your application is still 15 Kimber Circle.
Yes.
Which would be the home office.
Correct.
Where you'll mostly be working out of, I'm assuming.
For the time, I may, I may do, so, yes, yes. Until I, until I move over, and I guess with that contract in hand, I'd have to apply to have that changed, but it all depends on what happened here, so I didn't want to prematurely move.
Let's see, I'm, I just don't want a month from now, or two months from now, you to be out of that commercial property and them doing it out of your house, and.
I quite understand, yep.
Because then we won't.
Yep, I can get that done.
I won't renew a license at that point, and we can revoke, but.
Understand.
We shouldn't have to.
Okay. Would have any further questions to Mr. Bennett?
There's no other questions, I'll.
No questions for me.
Motion to close the hearing unless you want to take public comment.
Is anyone in the audience have anything on this issue? I'm seeing none. Okay, so no others further.
Make a motion to close the hearing. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes for 01.
I'll make a motion to grant the license to Damian Bennett for Bentec LLC, 15 Kimber Circle.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, 401. Okay, and you will get that letter to the town manager.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry it took so long.
Okay, I understand.
All right, first item is vote to approve the minutes of December 13th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from December 13th, 2021.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'm hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Item number two is vote intention to lay out Dorsey Street, Murphy Street, and Cynthia Road, Century Estates subdivision as a public way.
There's a copy of the plan here, if anybody wishes to.
With our approval tonight, this will go to the planning board?
Correct. Planning board will engage an engineer to review it, look over the project, make sure that it was built to the specifications, and they'll make a report back to us.
Does it come back to us at the town meeting?
It comes back to us, yes, or to you? And actually, when it comes back to you, it'll be for a hearing. And then upon that hearing, we'll put it, assuming that you approve it, it'll go on the warrant. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, or Scott, just for people watching at home, residents watching at home, can you explain what this vote intention to lay out, what it intend?
So this was a subdivision called Century Estates. I think there's three roads that made up the subdivision. They were built to the town standards for roadways and house lots. And what they're requesting is that the town accepts these roads as town roads. So what will happen here, if you vote to send this to the planning board, the planning board will hire an engineer that will review the as-built and make sure that it was built properly according to the approval for the subdivision, that it does meet all of our specifications, come back to this board, and if this board so desires, it'll go on the town meeting warrant, at which time, town meeting can vote to accept it as a town road. So it becomes an official town street.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I know I had a couple of residents reach out and just asking what this agenda item meant, so.
Yeah, I mean, as a town road, obviously, there, you know, it gets plowed, it gets taken care of, it gets maintained, the subsurface structures get maintained by the town. And, you know, as a benefit to that, too, it also goes towards our, the amount of roadway that we actually have, which affects the amount of Chapter 90 money that we get, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further from the board?
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen voted its intention to lay out Dorsey, Murphy Street, and Cynthia Road within Century East Estate subdivision as public ways.
I'll second.
All is shown on plan entitled roadway acceptance plan for Century Estates dated January 17th, 2022, prepared by Outback Engineer and Incorporated, and to forward this vote to the plan, and the plan to the planning board for its comments or recommendations pursuant to general law Chapter 41, Sub 81G and E81I.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Next on the agenda is the review of draft personnel policies.
Yeah, so as, as one of the major agenda items of this board, and one of the items that has been a very important to me to get done, is we wanted to develop and work on our personnel policies. We've discussed this a few times. It's been a long process. It was almost starting from scratch in some areas, so we've been working hard with Jamie Kenny and Clifford and Kenny's office, and Caitlin from Jamie's office also, and Leanne, our town clerk, has been working on this, so it's been a long time coming. We got a little process in front of us, and Jamie's gonna help explain that.
So this is kind of, I mean, you want to jump over what kind of background?
Yeah, either way, you can stand or sit, doesn't matter, whatever you prefer.
I'll sit. Great. So I've been working with Leanne closely to just kind of take a look at what the town has in place, and then, you know, just trying to use current employment law and current employment best practices to put together a policy book, you know, that helps the town move forward and really gives employees clear expectations of what's expected and what they can expect from the town in return.
Yeah, so the idea and concept behind this is just to make sure that we have one centralized location for all of the town's policies that apply to personnel, so that everybody understands and recognizes what the expectations are regarding all of this stuff. We want that to be centralized and there's no disparities between different department heads and between different persons who fall within any of these positions. So if Scott left tomorrow, if I wasn't here tomorrow, there's a codification of what, you know, what the expectations are and what these personal practices are. So as Caitlin said, it's kind of a little bit difficult here because generally when we come into a town, there's usually more, so to speak, to work with. So we really had to kind of draft some of this stuff from, you know, from scratch, but trying to be cognizant of what you did have to make sure that we're not modifying it or going too far afield of what has been existing practice. But also, we have to understand and recognize that those practices, it's, there has been, you know, there hasn't been central HR in this town. So when you don't have central HR in a town or in your organization, as one can imagine, someone goes to their supervisor and asks a question, they may get one answer. Someone else goes to a different supervisor and asks another question, they may get a different answer. So really, the purpose of this is to make sure that we're treating everybody equally, that there's uniformity, and that's really, you know, what we want to make sure that we have. In terms of what the process will be moving forward, we're still working on this draft document we didn't want to update before because we know it's a board priority, but we have been working on this document. What will happen from here is that we will be impact bargaining these policies with any of the unions. And everybody should understand and recognize that this comes subordinate to any collective bargaining agreement and any rules and regulations. So the police department has specific rules and regulations that apply to something, and they have a collective bargaining agreement. It's always gonna be collective bargaining agreement, rules and regulations, gap filler of town policies. So if there's any sort of issue with that, and we generally do enter into MOAs and MLUs with the unions when we end that bargain, laying that out so that everybody's clear about if there's a conflict, this is what governs. Because the purpose of this is not to create more confusion, the purpose of this is to really make sure that we really have a very clear policies and we have clear expectations for our employees. Because generally, that is what works best in terms of, in terms of making sure you have a cohesive organization and people feeling, which is really important, that people are being treated equally. So that's what the goal is here. You know, we're, we're working on it, we're trying to go through, we want to make sure that we've updated you all on this project. And if there's any further input that you all have, anything you feel that we haven't touched upon here, we're certainly open to that discussion. There will be another meeting after this, because we do have to do that impact bargaining, and then we have to adopt the final, and then even after the final is adopted, if there's impact bargaining that results in a change, it might have to come before you again. So this is, you know, this is very much a process because we're trying to make sure that we are being respectful and following the collective bargaining law in Massachusetts, which dictates a lot of this process. Okay?
Okay.
So you don't need a vote from us tonight on anything?
Nope, it's just to kind of update you on where you are. Yep, you just received, like, it's just to update you, and again, we'll, we'll be coming back before you a couple of extra times. But as Scott said, this has been a priority for this administration and for this board, and we wanted to make sure that we, you know, we gave you that update because as we start out this year, this is a high priority project for us.
What's the timeline, is a rough timeline for this to be?
So we have to circle back with our department heads and with Leanne on this, there's a couple of pieces, there are minor ones, and then our hope is to try to get that wrapped up within the next week we're gonna have, and then we can come back with you all and talk about, you know, the collective bargaining piece, which will be, and then we can start messaging it to the individual unions.
And then, once this is done, would this be something that is, every town employee would get a copy of this?
Yep, everyone would get a copy of it, we have it on the website, there would be, you know, clear, like a clear delineation that these are the policies and the policies that we have.
And we'll do some training.
And we'll train, yeah, we want to train our policies, because the biggest thing is that policies don't do any good in a war somewhere, we really want to train our policies. So there'll be sexual harassment training to train the sexual harassment policy, there'll be potentially workplace violence training to train the workplace violence policy. We'll have, you know, different subsets of trainings to make sure that people understand it and that we're training our department heads and we're training our employees, so that if they have a question about anything, it's very clear in terms of what the expectations are.
Now, will this, will this be part of it, or does it have to be part of it, or will this go through an annual review, like each year, will there be an annual review, or how would you look at that?
So normally, we review the policies every year, just like pro forma, but if we wanted to have that as a standing agenda item, that makes a lot of sense, just to give you all that opportunity to then, again, take it before the board.
I mean, I would like to see it, some sort of annual review, I mean, looking at these every year, not just changing the dates of them, reviewing it, putting anything new, I mean, collective bargaining agreements change, I don't know if that would affect this too much as a whole, but.
No, we usually don't use it again because it's subordinate, but I do think it's important to make sure that we have that, so that you all have that right to have the input. If there's any priorities that you feel that there's a gap on, you know, we need to make sure that we're listening to our leaders and, you know, taking that into consideration.
And this would fall on just town employees? Does this go to any boards, committees, anything else, or is this strictly town employees?
So the policies apply to anyone who would consider personnel under the, under the, under the policy. So we have a little bit more of a, we have a wider definition of that because it would apply to some elected officials and elected officials, so that's the definition. So that's, we already have a town playbook that applies to people in those positions as well.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I think it's great. Yeah, looking forward to hearing more and, you know, moving it forward. I think it's a great thing to have and getting a plan in place so we don't.
Long overdue.
Yeah, it is long overdue. I appreciate it and appreciate this, like I said, seeing it, you know, progressing. So thank you.
You're welcome. We're happy to work with you all, and we're happy to answer any, you know, questions everyone has. We can, we're gonna set up, this is gonna, this is the beginning, so we're gonna set up, you're gonna see me again on this before it's in the final draft. Okay?
Thank you. Awesome. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while we're kind of a subject, I just want to let you guys know that Alex and Alex will be meeting as a subcommittee for policies and procedures on Wednesday, and we hope to have a report back to you on the selectmen's policies and procedures by our next meeting or the second meeting in February.
Okay. That's awesome.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Next up is the town manager report, media financial update for FY23 budget update.
I was confused when I saw this.
Yeah.
Yeah, this'll be brief, if you don't mind. Yeah. Yeah, and this will be brief, I mean, a lot of this is stuff that we've talked about, but we, well, let me just, so, as you're aware, we're working on the fiscal year 23 budget, and at this point, we're waiting for the governor to submit his budget and for us to finish reviewing the first half of fiscal year 22 receipts. Those will all be in and settled probably, you know, by the end of January, going into February. The governor's budget will be, should be submitted next week or the end of this week, and that'll give us those numbers that we can start putting in also. Currently, the fiscal year 22 revenue numbers and expenses are tracking appropriately, so everything is looking good there. We'll likely update the revenue and expense numbers, though, in mid-Je, in mid-February, and at that point, we'll come back to this board. Currently, the requested budget, which I gave to you guys last meeting, reflects all the needs of the department heads and all their asks, so it's brought in a deficit right now of $2 million. Some of the biggest drivers of the deficit are increasing trash removal expenses, which should not be a shock, I've mentioned that several times, our health insurance costs and our liability insurance costs. So we're actively seeking quotes, as we did last year, and we'll continue to do it every year, on our health and our liability. On the health end, we've met with Maya. We're gonna have another meeting with Mayflower and another discussion with some other groups that we're hoping that we can find some savings there. We are self-insured and out there on our own. I think when the decision made a long time ago, or prior to me getting here to leave Mayflower, I think it was always a hope that there would be another group out there that we would partner with, but that just hasn't happened, and we haven't found that right fit yet. So Mayflower may be a better fit to go back to, or again, Maya is, we've already had some great discussions with them, and there's a couple more that we're going to be meeting with, but we will make a move. If for no other reason, it's just because being, being out there on our own, although we have a fairly healthy bank account, it's, you know, a few bad illnesses or problems could deplete that pretty quickly, and we'd be in a bad position. Again, this is preliminary numbers, we've asked department heads to review their budgets, we submit considering 5% reductions. Obviously, reductions of that size will have a big effect on services, but again, the process has just started, so let's not panic. For some good news, though, the Mass Department of Local Services has confirmed that statewide meals tax, excise tax, marijuana tax collections have all gone up fairly significantly. That'll be reflected in our local distributions, and additionally, all other revenue collections for the state are up significantly. So we don't know yet how that's gonna affect state aid, but there was a suggestion on the webinar today that, you know, could be an increase in state aid in the 2%, 2.5% area. Some of the other projects we have going on, we have the Callan Center has been engaged to assist in developing the capital plan, so they're currently meeting with department heads. We're hoping to have that put together fairly soon. They're gonna make some recommendations, help us prioritize the projects, and give us some ideas on how we should fund the program. Town meeting webpage is up and active at this point, we're waiting to refine the draft budget one more time before we put it on there. Not received or finalized any warrant articles to date, however, as soon as we do, we'll put those on the website. We are looking to propose a marijuana cultivation overlay, or marijuana cultivation-only district, and maybe some additional marijuana cultivation-only licenses. If there are any citizen groups, boards, committees that have an article that they would like to see on the annual town meeting warrant, they are welcome to reach out to me directly, certainly should look on the town meeting website for more information. On February 14th, I'm gonna present to this board several parcels of land that you've have. me directly, certainly should look on the town meeting website for more information. On February 14th, I'm going to present to this board several parcels of land that you've indicated to me that feel like, you know, they consider them environmentally significant in potential areas for open space and recreation. You know, these are the ones that we've looked at on Oakland Street, Chestnut Street, Rockland Street. And I, what I'd like to do is have you make a recommendation for the open space committee and the conservation committee, who are going to meet on the 15th in a joint meeting, and it would be great if some members of this committee can meet with them also, because it would be nice to finally take these and officially put them into conservation and secure and protect those properties. Couple things to look for in February, new episodes of Town Manager's Corner. We'll be covering the ins and outs of setting the tax rate and assessing property, and there'll also be an episode with the finance director as we get closer to town meeting to discuss budgets and in-depth. We're going to get those things up on the website, so there'll be links to them also in our town meeting webpage. On February 9th, the finance team and I will present to the finance committee a wrap-up of CARES Act spending. Some free cash numbers should be certified by then, certainly, hopefully sooner than then. And we'll begin the discussion on what we're going to do with our opera funds, and I'll also plan, I plan to share the same presentation with the Board of Selectmen on the meeting, even on the 14th to the 28th. And that's all I have for you.
Okay. Any questions from the board, and Scott's update? So will you have those, the parcels of land, you're going to present them, will we have it before that meeting, or are you just going to...
Yeah. Now, I'll get you a map, and we'll, so you'll have an idea of what we're going to have. I'll have a map, and we'll do a presentation up on the screen, so you can see the parcels. But you'll have them in advance, and they're ones that we've already seen and talked about.
Is there an update on the actual town webpage, website, other than just the town meeting one?
So it's in the hands of Civic Plus. They're the ones who actually put it together. They gave us a draft, we worked with them. We're waiting for it to come back live, it's just sort of a PDF right now, a JPEG, of a picture of what it will look like. I believe Tony has had a chance to see it live, but, you know, we, it's all up to Civics Plus, so we're hoping to see it soon. I think the last time I talked to you and updated, they, they had indicated it'd be about six weeks, and we're probably right in that area right now. Before it goes fully live, though, I will bring it in for you guys to look at, because there may be some tweaks that we want to make.
Okay. Awesome. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
It's almost a record, Ken.